I show seven o'clock on my official watch. Mr. Flores, Mr. Beekman, Mr. Hassan Gun. So, if we could all rise and we'll... Is cameraman ready? We'll open up the meeting with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Just a reminder, anybody that needs to speak, we have the remote mic. I should follow my own advice.
And speak into the remote mic because we've changed our technical capacity and to get better sound on Panda, we either talk close to our mics or into the remote mic. So, when folks come up, that would be the drill. But welcome to the February 13, 2017, meeting. We were lucking out with winter until about, what, four or five days ago? And I think the Howie boys are in some sort of catatonic shock. They're all sleeping right now. They've been working really hard, doing a great job, I think. If you look around the village, they've been plowing at four in the morning, I think, for the past three or four or five days to beat the traffic push and keep things going, but they did a great job. And they were supposed tonight to do the four-corner cleanup, but they're gonna hold off on that till tomorrow night is the latest word, only because they're exhausted and we don't want them hurting themselves or putting a front-end loader through Black Star Social or anything that would be not good for the village. But we do thank them a lot, they're really working hard. We have tonight working with us our clerk's assistant, Ari Drews. Cindy's off on vacation, so Ari will be breaking her in. She's helped with some workshops, but this is her first televised monthly meeting. And with that, Jay Trapp did say he's on the way. Not sure when he'll get here, but we'll go a little slow and get him because I'd like to have all five board members here as we go. But let me sit down and we'll get to the regular business. If we look at our agendas, generally we open up with minutes approval. And I'll just dig down to where I have mine here. We had a meeting January 9th, which was our regular monthly meeting, and then we had January 19th, the workshop. I've perused them and reviewed them and looked good. Did anybody else have any additions, alterations, or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept those two sets of minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. With Clerk Sherella Knott being here, she also is the treasurer, so I'll read the treasurer's report. As of, it looks like the date of the report on the top is 13 February, so that'd be tonight. So, I guess we presume by the close... At the close of business is Friday. We have in the general fund account balance $401,316. Water fund, $140,000. Trust and agency, $33,251.28. Materials management, $7,560.38. Petty cash, which always amazes me, $32.20. Do you get to keep track of that, Ari?
I do.
Okay. Village Green, $4,136.88. Hardscrabble has $6,439.34. The health insurance fund has $4,601.98. And by design, at this point in time, Capital Projects has $0 in the account. As far as expenses, in general fund, this month there was $129,595.79 expenses. Water fund had $59,438.37. Trust and agency, $33,251.28. Materials management spent $4,029.99. The vouchers are out on the table. There were two that were rather important. One was for some Phase Two water work there. I think everybody, I think they were on the top of the pile, you see them? And then I think there was a second one for the purchase of the backhoe that was there that needed some transactions. And you'll notice in the packets that since the church was away, that the check versions are there too. So, it's checks being in there so the staff tomorrow can mail out once the vouchers are signed. Any questions or input on the treasurer's report? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And let's see. I thought while we wait for trustee Trapp, what we could do is we have... We could bounce to our regular business section. We have Bard's college student rep here, Hassan Gun. You might remember Hassan from a while back. He took some time off from Bard and he's back now. Hassan, if you want to come up and just give us the Bard interaction report, and this takes about four seconds to warm up. And you can stand over there, it'd be good.
Hello?
Yep, you're on.
Yeah, good. All right. Thank you guys so much for having me. I'll make it short and sweet because there's not that many updates. I'm back at Bard. If you guys don't know, I chair the peer review board, which is Bard's Conduct System. So, for instance, if a student gets caught drinking, they're underage, I come see them, or rather, they come see me. So, something that I've done is expanding... I've expanded community service hours. So, rather than putting people on social probation or fining them, I've basically just expanded the system for community service. I worked with the Environmental Services Union, that is basically housekeeping, to basically make it so students can volunteer there as restitution to the community. And just as well, working with Mayor Blundell, Deputy Mayor Kovalchik, and Joel Griffith, and Emily Major, and Tivoli, I've basically gone and approved to have students volunteer at off-campus locations. So, say, for instance, next, this coming year, we're going to have students volunteering at Hardscrabble. So, this is just another little... Just our little effort to work on community relations. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Hassan. You can give it to Brent.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay or head out for the shuttle, whatever you prefer. Let's see, I thought we'd do too... I saw a representative from the board of directors of the fire company walk in. Right? And what we could do is, as we wait for Jay Trapp to show up, what we could do... Rob Strive is the person I'm referring to out in the audience. We do have on our regular business agenda, building alterations requests. Is that why you're here tonight? I could say a few things and then here's what I thought. I wanted to update the board that the plans were submitted and that certain things have to happen. My thought was, I wrote to the Chair of your board Thursday or Friday last week. We have a workshop this week on Thursday where the board could actually physically look at the concept and look at the terms of lease. But I'd feel more than welcome if you wanted to say a few things now while we're waiting for one of our fifth colleagues to come up. So, same drill, if you want to take the mic and upstairs, we do have plans. I don't know if, like I said, they're big.
I said you have the plans. The reason that I'm here, though... How you doing, Robert Strive, Reddick Fire Company? Is because I do believe...
You're on.
Yeah.
I do believe that the planning board is set to meet Wednesday. I do believe. So, due to certain time criterias, as you know, I don't know if you've looked at the plans or not, but it's basically a renovation to the community room and a small addition to redirect foot traffic from in front of the bays around the side of the backside of the building. So, it is a time-sensitive matter because we have, I believe, April the 1st is Patty Bowman's breakfast there for, I believe, at St. Jude. So, that's why I came tonight because we would like to get... I believe that we're on the planning board's regular business. I do believe they put us on because they're aware of the time sensitivity. So, that's why I'm here tonight, hoping that we could get approval from the mayor and the village board before that. I know that it's usually a lengthy process, but...
No, it shouldn't be. I think as far as what I understand, the planning board has shifted to February 21st, is the last date I saw.
Oh, it has been shifted.
So, it's...
I told that to you. There's a note on the door.
And it kind of falls pretty nicely. Our workshop would be this Thursday, and I would welcome you or somebody else to come back and show... Because I think what I envision is opening it up, laying it out. It's twofold things we have to do is the lease we have with the fire company is like it's a 50-year lease where we give the ground and...
Right.
Additions and alterations, we can't... Cannot refuse reasonable consents, you know, but...
Right.
The board has the right to see it and then see what it does. That would be my goal, shoot it for Thursday, and then I think it can all happen.
This Thursday? And what time is your...
We meet 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM upstairs again?
Yeah.
All right, maybe we can touch on the contract too, then?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking. Yeah, it's more of a workshop setting where we lay out the plans and...
Right, okay.
You can point things out instead of trying to do it here.
No, that's not a problem. That's not a problem.
And I think it will work out across the board. And then if that works for you...
That works great for me. And when did you say the planning board was? The 25th?
21.
21?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put it in my calendar.
It was posted on the door when you came on the site.
Oh, is it? All right.
Yeah, because they bumped it for bad weather Thursday, and then they were trying to get the next Thursday, whatever you first said, didn't work out for other professional people who had to be there.
All right.
And then, so it works, I think it all parties' favor.
Very good. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
JT, we jumped a little bit. We knew you were running late from your text message, so we were... We had the Bard student give his report, and then Rob from the fire company was just here. I think you walked in midstream of that one. Did you, Jay?
I was back there sort of assembling my stuff.
Okay. Therefore, we can move to more of a... What I thought we'd do is we have our engineer in the office, and what I thought I'd do for the board and for the listening public and the audience public, again, switch our order a little bit so the engineer can get out of here at a reasonable hour. During the week, I guess it was Monday, so it had to be last week, the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce invited village representatives to a public forum at the Black Star Social, one of our village businesses. And it was in conjunction with the Town of Red Hook EDC and the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce, and we presented the latest and greatest on the sewer project. And we're at a phase now where we have to take certain definitive steps on certain required studies and analyses we have to do. So, what I thought we'd do, I have a PowerPoint. I'm not going to run the whole PowerPoint, but what we could do is put that up. And then essentially what we've got, I'd like Brent to give a piece of his report first, so he, you know how he updates everything on funding and timelines and dates and so forth. I think if we listen to him first, then we can go from there. So, Brent, are you about ready to do something there?
Yeah, I'll just run to the sewer. I won't go through everything, but I'll go through some. As a Red Hook Sewer Project, the meetings were held on January 4th, 6th, 13th, 20th, 23rd, and 27th at the village building. We reviewed and calculated sewer use rates, including the annual capital cost and the first year operating and maintenance costs per benefit user. And this was all based on the number of benefit users or equivalent dwelling units, which is based on the USDA financing. We also reviewed scenarios and planning for sewer main locations. We reviewed and revised certain forms required of us from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. And we did determine benefit use zones. I think we came up with seven different benefit use zones, and what these would be would be specific rates for these specific zones. For the sewer project, we also reviewed and revised a draft map plan and report, which is a required document that we need to submit for review from the funding agencies. And we reviewed and revised the draft water consumption rate. Our engineering report of the final one of June 2015 used 2014 water meter readings, and this was the first year that we had our meters. We're reviewing this without changing any of the properties based on the current, I guess, last year's 2016 water meter reading. So, this was done as a result, some of the businesses that we had have changed, some have vacant, some we've gotten. So, we just wanted to update that list and make it as accurate as possible. And we also reviewed and revised the minority and women-owned business enterprise utilization plan, which is another document from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. On January 13th, we met with our attorneys to discuss the Red Hook transfer of ownership and conveyance of the property of the Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation. This will be property behind the existing Red Hook Commons that has a sewer treatment plant, which will be conveyed over to the village and some land for future expansion. Also, on the 13th, we met with our attorney, our village attorney, to review the local law regulating use of public and private sewers and maintenance of said sewers. This is the sewer use law that we are currently drafting. At some point, we'll adopt. On January 20th, a meeting was held also in the village building. And this is the meeting that Ed was talking about. We were invited by, we, Robert Flores, Ed and I, representing the village, did a presentation, a very quick presentation, to the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce, some of the businesses and residential property owners. This will be the second one we've had. There'll be a series coming forward in the near future, but basically to explain the premise of the system. And then the real purpose was to listen to comments and answer questions from those businesses. So, that was, that was pretty good, actually. Very early in the morning. 7:30 we started. Also, on January 20th, we, the village of Red Hook, received notification that the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Loan Committee met on January 19th and awarded the village of Red Hook a $3.7 million, 0% interest, short-term loan for the Red Hook Sewer Project. And this was to pay for work that transpires between when we start the project and when we close on the long-term financing that we've acquired through USDA. On January 23rd, a conference call was held in the Red Hook Village Building with the acting director, which is, she's just been appointed the director of USDA Rural Development New York Headquarters in Syracuse. And we looked at the adjusted O and M anticipated rates, reviewed the cost per equivalent dwelling units, and, which was all based on comparative costs of other systems and other municipalities that are used by USDA to determine a target cost per benefit unit for the Red Hook Village Sewer Project. On January 23rd, the United States Senators Chuck Schumer and Kirsten Gillibrand announced that the village of Red Hook received a $1.2 million grant and a $3.7 million federal low-interest loan, low interest being 1.875% interest for a 38-year term. There were a series of press articles that featured the Red Hook Sewer Project. One was on January 23rd in the Daily Freeman, another one on the 24th in the Poughkeepsie Journal, and on January 25th in the Northern Duchess News. So, we have made all attempts to get the word out to as many people with our regular press and then public outreach seminars we've been having. And then lastly, on January 27th, a conference call was held in the village building with George Pop of the United States Rural Development. He's our regional rep out of Middletown. And just to review some of the documents that, which we actually got more today, I couldn't believe, I mean, more we have. But the letter of conditions, reasonable comparative costs of similar systems, terms to complete the project in five years, which is the term of our grant and loan program, and provisions for cost coverage contingencies. So, that's my report for the sewer project.
Okay, we had him pull that out on purpose, like we said, just to give the overview that he keeps to the record for the village here so well. The key things for the board, if you guys on the board could look in your packets, there's a resolution, unnumbered, titled Municipal Sewer Project, Engineering Contract and Related Costs. If you could have that on top. I'll just distill a few things from Brent's report. The big thing is, we all know as a board, on December 29th, we got the USDA Letter of Conditions, which was including two factors, 3.7 million at the 1.875% interest and 38 years, plus the real game changer, the $1.2 million outright grant. We can, like we said at other meetings, we can now do math and get pretty close to projecting a cost per benefit user based on this. Then buried within Brent's report there, on January 20th, I think, is the date he said, for the EFC commitment, the short-term money. Again, that's huge. That's 0% interest. It's the enabling money for us to start work on certain precursor, early stages of the project here. If the board could reflect on Phase One and Two of the water project, that's how we did that. We have the USDA sitting in the background with the big end-of-game money, but EFC used the short-term money to do the work as progress goes through in time and goes into the project. So, these are all great things lining up. And what we have to do is, we have a few things to do, and by that, there's a technical step you've heard kicked around. It's called the map and plan report that the engineers have to work on, where it sets the final boundaries of the district, the count of people that are in the district. And then at the same time, we have this project running side by side. A key play in the whole creation of this sewer district is taking ownership of the current Red Hook Commons Sewer Wastewater Treatment Plant and converting that to village ownership. And that involves legal with some subdivision and different things going on. And then it also involves some engineering consulting on the land transaction and the capacities, different things that have to happen to make that transaction occur. Those cost money. Each year, we, past two years, we budgeted $15,000 in our general fund budget for what we call sewer admin. But these two will cost more than that. So, we have to line up our process here. So, it looks to me like what we need to do is the engineers have to keep going on the map and plan report, and we have to keep moving ahead on the transaction to take ownership of that sewer plant. And when we do, we have to time it out. When we do take ownership, it does have an annual cost to operate right now, which we know. We have figures from Red Hook Commons Sewer Transportation. I forget the exact legal names. You know that it's Transportation Corporation formed by Red Hook Commons that we would be taking over.
It's the Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation.
Okay. What that means is we're not taking ownership of the senior citizen project. It's just they had created a separate distinct entity on a piece of their land over there. So, all these things, essentially, they're balls in the air, and we have to time it out. But unfortunately, they cost money to do. We can't, we can't just stop doing any of it. And then the $15,000 is not enough to do it either. So, the engineers have prepared a contract, which I've had McCabe and Mack look at. It's here. It's essentially standardized format, but unique to this project. And it's what I would call phased. It goes through the gross cost, but at different phases. It includes what would be considered a stop-work permission order, you know, where something will go awry. We're not committed to the whole thing. But we do need to set up a way to get moving here. In my opinion, the funding is there and it's set. Like we said, the state at a 0%, Brent mentioned that's a five-year window. And, you know, some of this, I'm just going through. This was more for the presentation. But I have things we need to do toward the end. Another factor we have to address, one thing for the village, we're in the water business, but we're not in the sewer business. The good part about being in Phase One and Phase Two of water was we had a cash flow and we had a mechanism to quarterly bill, and we have an existing code of law that generates how we behave as a water operator. We don't have that as far as the village and the sewer. We're going from scratch right now. So, we've asked our attorneys to glean and develop a sewer law, which would be embodied in our village code. It would include the regulations and the daily operations and rates and so forth that would be similar to running a water department, but it'd be a sewer department. So, that would be subject, that'd be a change of our local law, so that would be subject to public hearing and so forth. The other thing, like I said a few times, we have the map plan report underway, but to finalize it and set rates and things, we need to start spending some money. We have to transact that purchase from Red Hook Commons. And we have to do precursor work. Our main system is designed on the mains would be out in our public right of ways. Then there's a lot of easement work where we're going to be tapping into existing septic systems. And so, there's a fair amount of legal work and engineering as far as surveying and defining boundaries and so forth to get the easements set up. So, these are things that all have to be going on. And a lot of them are already going on, but they're starting to hit the phase where it's not just talk anymore, it's we have to fund it. So, with that in mind...
And just one thing, too. I think all these costs that we're talking about were actually incorporated within the capital cost of the project. So, this is something that, again, the short-term loan will pay for some of these things we can get going, but it will eventually be rolled over into the long-term USDA loan. So, this is costs that we have anticipated occurring during the process. And so, it's nothing new or nothing, but it is being covered by the money that we received in the terms of loans and grants, so...
Good point. Yeah, it's, I'm presuming, I know that, but it's good that you bring that out. It's not, these are not new or unknown costs. These are planned costs. Anyway, it's all very exciting as well. But I thought, Jay, would you use your stage presence voice? Could you read what I prepared as a resolution? I thought we'd read it into the record, then we can have more discussion. I just wanted to pre-discuss a little bit there.
This is resolution number four?
Uh, let's see, we'd have to ask our assistant clerk here.
Yep, it's number four.
Well, call it number four.
Municipal Sewer Project Phase One, Engineering Contract and Related Costs. Whereas the village of Red Hook has secured a letter of commitment from the USDA ARD dated 12/29/2017 that includes funding of $4.9 million for the sewer project in the form of a $3.7 million loan, which is 38 years at 1.875% interest and a $1.2 million grant. Whereas the village of Red Hook has secured short-term financing commitment from New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, that's the NYSEFC, for $4.9 million at 0% interest dated January 19, 2017. Whereas the village has to incur expenses to take the next required steps in the sewer project, namely preparing a map and plan report, requisite legal and engineering analysis and related costs for the site plan work for transfer of ownership of the Red Hook Common Lands and existing sewer plant to the village of Red Hook and development of the sewer code for insertion into the village code. Whereas the engineering firm of CT Mail and Associates was selected by RFP Process and the law firms of McCabe and Mack LLC and Rodenhausen Schall LLC have been selected. Whereas CT Mail and Associates has submitted an engineering contract for the sewer project with phased billing increments, and said contract has been reviewed by council of the village of Red Hook. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the village of Red Hook is authorized to sign the contract with CT Mail and Associates so they can conclude the work on the map and plan report as well as continue other required tasks for this project and the related costs will be submitted to the New York State EFC for reimbursement. Secondly, the project will involve legal work by McCabe and Mack LLC and Rodenhausen Schall LLC, and their fees will be paid upon review from the short-term New York State EFC funds. Be it further resolved that any other required documents related to the engineering and legal fields can be completed by the mayor. Costs incurred and paid under the funding mechanisms available to the village require authorization by the mayor and normal voucher approval procedures.
Ed?
Okay, so it's been read into the record. I think for the purpose of discussion, we should have a second, and then have discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
In the second paragraph, so the EFC loan is 3.7 million?
The short-term, yeah.
And then on the third paragraph, fourth line, Red Hook Commons Land, I don't know if you want to change that to Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation?
I think we should give it the formal title there, yeah. One, two, three, let's see. Where is I print?
Fourth, fourth line of the third paragraph.
Okay, Red Hook.
Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation.
Is it Sewage, like?
Sewage, S-E-W-A-G-E. And, uh, just for clarification too, so the project costs is $4.9 million, the 3.7 million short-term financing. Once that's used up, the, the grant, the 1.2 million USDA grant will kick in. So, that's what that is. So, the 3.7 actually covers the terms of the USDA, USDA A loan. And then, the USDA 1.2 million grant will kick in after that.
So, in the real world of construction, if things?
Up to 4.9 million.
Yeah. And, so what I did was, in, I guess it'd be one, two, the third paragraph, if we said, transfer of ownership of the Red Hook Commons Lands, of the Red Hook Commons, let's see, of the Red Hook Commons Sewage.
Works Corporation.
Works Corporation, let's see.
And Existing Sewer Plant.
Let's see, transfer ownership of the.
Corporations.
Lands, I guess we'd say lands of Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporation and including the existing sewer plant, so.
Or you could just keep it simple and just say Red Hook Commons Sewage Works Corporations.
And just take lands out?
Lands and existing land, well, it would be land, about 10 acres.
Okay.
Just, just add on after Red Hook Commons Sewage Work Corporation.
Yeah. Before the word lands.
Oster yes.
Essentially tiling the form of corporation. Any other thoughts, discussion? Hearing none. I would call a contract signing and related legal to a vote. Mr. Zarchuk?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Ms. Norris?
Yep.
I, Mr. Kowalczek?
Yes.
And Mr. Trapp?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we can, some work done on that. Well, we have Robert here. We'll be meeting, we'll see you Wednesday and Friday, I guess, and then, anyone, quick update on Phase Two? I know USDA is coming back to look at that sometime in the near future. Want to talk a little bit?
All right, well, first, thank you very much for the, always having the opportunity to, working with you and continuing to work with you. Appreciate your business for sure. So, we're completing, getting close to completing a very large project, you know, Phase Two of the water project. The voucher you have for Gross Electric is the great majority of their work and then it'll just be the, a little bit of close-up work and retainage after that. So, we are to the, almost to the bitter end, I guess, on the construction side of things. And we have a meeting with USDA to review, you know, they can do the site inspection, look at the actual electrical work that they did. This was the, Gross Electric's electrical contractor, so he did the control panel work and instrumentation work that went with Phase Two. So, we're about to wrap that up. It's kinda, seems like it's been forever we've been talking about it. We're here, I guess.
That's good. Well, there's a little bit of business there too, right? Cause the USDA, they were leading us to close and, but we'd rather get it all done and close at our schedule for, you know, incurring the debt and that sort.
Right, there's a, yeah, so when you close, then you have to start repaying the debt. Right now, you're kind of in the free grace period of the, the, the short-term loan.
Right.
So, the way we're scheduled, you, you want your next fiscal year to start, not, you know, with your repayments.
Yeah. But I guess the good news, once that's done, will be totally, will SCADA be really much more efficient and effective, like communications?
So, we take the next step on the SCADA in that with any, well, with the proper device that's, with, you know, passwords and codes and that kind of thing, phone, iPad, compute, desktop computer, you can access what's going on at the, at the water plant. So, can, you know, monitor in real life, real time, the, you know, the pressure in the system, what pumps are on, if there's, if there's alarms, that kind of thing. So, a lot better monitoring, a lot better reaction time.
I think the good news is Steve told me he's taking the career step of retiring in the near future. We could give him those laptops and cellphones and he'll be, he can stay up all night watching those charts, right? Engages?
Check, check up, do the bedtime check, as we call it, right? Make sure it's good before you go to bed. First thing you wake up in the morning, check it in. Right now, we're doing it with, you know, with, with people, so be nice to do it with.
Yeah, be interesting.
You can't ever replace people completely, obviously.
Yeah, we were, when we were at the informational meeting the other day, I thought of something and I stated it to the public, and I think it's kinda true. We did our Phase One, which is 1.24 million dollars, and then, we rolled into Phase Two Water, which was 3.8 million, and now, we're pushing towards Sewer at 4.9. Yeah, we got the first two done and in my opinion, and everybody think they were successful, they were done within budget. So, I think it's, it's kinda good that we built a little track record on infrastructure. Like I said before though, the interesting part about the sewer one to me is that there's no existing system. We don't have that rotating billing cycle and different things where we could absorb certain things. So, it's gonna be kinda interesting designing this from really zero dollars and zero, zero code and so forth, but anyway.
Yeah, there's some brand-new issues to deal with, yeah.
Yeah, but it'd be, be fun. All right, so, any questions for Robert on Phase Two? Always here. I guess we'll let you go then, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Robert. We could move back toward semblance of our, our planned meeting. I read the treasures report. I could do the police report. That's in your packets as well, for the month of January. Looks like a total of 321 incidents. Breaks out 251 in the village, 68 in the town, two in Tivoli. As far as tickets resulting from patrol and work, it's a total of 118. Breaks out 70 in the Village of Red Hook. Of that, three are parking tickets and 48 in the Town of Red Hook. Arrests were 23. Breakout is 12 in the Village of Red Hook and 11 in the Town of Red Hook.
See some foot patrols in there, huh?
Yeah, they got them in there.
Oh, good.
The lads are on the street. I think they're doing one more foot, you know, here later on. We, we have two cars down and kinda makes you do foot, I think. But anyway, we'll get to that a little bit later, but.
Let's hope they keep it up.
Yeah. I think they got the message. Let's see, Mr. Trustee Trapp, by order of rule here, it looks like you're next. You ready?
Oh, sure. Okay, been working on the, reviewing the building department fees. We do this every so often. And it, you know, it's really justified. Now, I'll tell you why the, the review and probable increase is because the job of building department and zoning enforcement is, is more and more complicated. Every year, it gets, it gets the requirements that the code enforcement officers need to keep up with, training, you know, around here, well, not so much floodplain management, but by default, the building inspector is the manager of the floodplains in whatever municipality that he presides. Operating permits, fire inspections, backflow prevention, it all keeps stacking up on the guys down there. So, so the time, they have to really manage their time very carefully, cause very few of the building departments are full-time, only a few municipalities. So, these guys have to kinda move along at a pretty good clip. So, when we revise some of these things, we chatted last at the last workshop, just ever so briefly, and, and I'm still waiting for everybody to come forward with their, with their stuff, and then I'll put it into a final spreadsheet and we'll kinda, you know, put it out for review at that point. But I, I see a lot of the fees do need to come up and there's some fees that we just don't have a category for that might be a requirement, something that we want to think about, and I'll, I'll sort of star those so that we get a sense of that. But with that being said, we had 11 building permits issued in January, five certificates of occupancy were issued, two certificates of compliance were issued, two municipal searches were conducted, one ordered to remedy, looks like a property maintenance issue here. Robert was burning out on the fire inspections. He's doing 37 of them, so he's grinding away on them and, and when I read the, the amount taken in in January, you'll see that a large portion of it are like the fire inspections that are important. I mean, when you look at the center of the village, things are tightly clustered with zero clearance between buildings, so the necessity of, of appropriate fire protection is, is pretty important. So, getting that right is a good thing. The planning board met in January and they had a sign approval and a site plan application, which was tabled. ZBA had no agenda and the money taken in for January 2017 was $3,500. 2550 of that were, was fire inspections. And I still owe some time on that FAST grant that we'll, we'll get together on that thing. And I think that's probably it, just, you know, whenever you have your thoughts together on the, the fees, just throw them in my box and let me know and I'll come by and pick them up and put them all back into the spreadsheet as one big unit. And other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'm, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Yeah, it is good, like Jay said, they've got a big bulk of fire inspections done in the heart of the village and then they're working on another big location out in the NMU zone, so, so keeping them busy there. I do still prod periodically, guys, on the backflow prevention. That's still a project out there. Anyway, let's see.
Have to chase everybody on that one.
Mr. Trapp, he'd be done, Kowalczek did some of his, why don't we let Brent, we'll hold you off a little bit, Brent. Why don't we listen to some water from Trustee Zarchuk down there? And when you might, if you have anything on facilities. Did we have something, Steve, on, more on phone systems? You were gonna track down Bear?
Yeah, so gotta get in touch with him, but if you would.
We're cooking up some idea to transfer more phones around, but if you can think of that too, but go with what you have there.
Okay. The water report for January 2017. Due to a minor IT issue with a SCADA computer, only 27 days worth of flow data was recorded. This issue has been repaired and public health official has been kept informed. From January 1st to January 27th, water treatment plant treated 6,276,000 gallons at an average rate of 232,000 gallons per day. During the entire month of January, the water treatment plant used 55 gallons of liquid hydrochloride solution to disinfect the water supply at an average rate of 1.77 gallons per day. On January 31st, the original pump from well 15 was put back into service after repair and been taken out of service November 15th of 2016. Conservation tip. Running toilets are the single biggest source of high water consumption in the public water system. Changing out the valve and flapper at regular five-year intervals can prevent unexpectedly high water bills. One customer this month asked the operator to look into why their consumption was so high and the toilet was found to be leaking one gallon every five minutes. That amounted to an additional 26,000 gallons of consumption in a single quarter. When the fam, when the average family of four users, use, excuse me, when the average family of four uses an average of 12,000 gallons per quarter, the loss of 26 gallons above and beyond their normal consumption seems staggering. If only 10% of our customers have a similar leaky toilet, that amounts to 2,210,000 gallons per quarter. While this loss is metered and sold, is still equivalent to, it's still the equivalent of more than 17 million half-liter bottles of water being wasted down the drain, just our tiny system serving only 2,730. One question, what, they don't note on here, what did I, what did the IT issue amount to?
Well, I know they came in, they, they used the word, the computer froze. And I asked them, does that mean it froze because it was so cold outside or, or not? They said, no, not because of the cold. Something, whatever laptop is there.
Crashed or something like that.
Yeah.
No, no, it just, if it froze, it just froze.
They used the word froze. I said, well, is it okay? They said, yeah, so, whatever it was, is fixed, but it did mess up, like they said, whatever's in January, four days or not in the logging record there.
Well, did they come back with the actual cause of why it froze up?
I haven't heard, no.
Did Rick do that?
I really don't know. I think it might be, it happened on a weekend and then when the regular operator came in, a little more skill set was there with computer, but that's a little guess on my part.
Okay. I'll see if I can track down. That's of interest.
We could look at calendar, I don't know what days, was that a weekend? Do you have a calendar laying in front of you there somehow?
Yeah. Yeah, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, on the other thing with phones, we're talking, we're trying to develop a training succession backup plan with different folks in the shop and Steve's helped, what do we do with police to, you know, having phones follow a person so they can work from different.
Right.
Workstations. So, if we could work on that to get something.
Yeah, I'll have Bear come.
Yeah, okay.
And Steve, did you participate in a webinar for the Street Lighting Consortium?
Yes, I did.
Was that last month, though?
No, January 11th.
Huh?
January 11th.
Yes, I, I was on the call.
Okay, but maybe he's asking, could you, you want to update us? I think you talked about it at a workshop or something.
I talked about it at a workshop, but I don't have the documents right with me.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, I attended the seminar. Quite a few of us attended via, following in the conference call.
Yeah. What we're talking about there is, is a push, what's the formal entity? Municipal ownership of streetlights is the, the end goal, but it's, we're, it's resurfaced again and to our credit, we did look at it, I would say, what, four or five years ago?
Four or five years ago.
We looked at Siemens for, if they would fund it and different things, but, but it's worth looking at again. I think just looking at the vouchers, we still have 252 streetlights and some are converted to LED, but.
Right.
Still a lot that aren't and the big question is, do we want to own them or not? I know Tivoli's looking at it, the Town of Red Hook's looking at it. And, you know, we're kinda babysitting going along.
You know, one of the things that came out of the seminar, Brent, was that we needed to do what we had already done to get a firm to come in and do an actual evaluation of the system of all the streetlights and of our bills and everything. And we were way ahead of the curve on that. We had done, like Ed just said, we had previously done that, I think, three or four years ago.
At least.
Where most municipalities have not done it.
Yeah, we use that firm, CompuTel, which we've talked about, but a thought, Steve, I think once you did something, we're also trying to get that, I think it's designation Clean Energy Community. We have three of the criteria met. We have the universal solar permitting thing, we have EV charging stations, you need four out of 10 criteria. And the fourth that might be low-hanging fruit for us is you have to audit your energy consumption in your buildings. Did you do once some sort of Central Hudson spreadsheet or something? Do you remember?
I had done the spreadsheets before. I wonder if you could, I can go back and recreate.
Cause, it seems, yeah, we've been fortunate that our building is new compared to most and we have.
Right.
High-energy, high-efficiency lighting and different things, but I think we could get the fourth criteria by just doing some sort of a building spreadsheet and then submit it to the agency and then we could get on that list of, it's an interesting list to be on, so if you could dig up.
Yeah, I'll dig it up and I'll bring it up today.
Thanks. Let's see, what else do we have here? Why don't we hear from Ms. Norris? What's up in your world?
Why don't we hear from Ms. Norris, what's up in your world?
Somewhere there is grass underneath.
The snow?
Underneath the snow, which will hopefully melt in time for our egg scramble, which will be Saturday, April eighth at eleven AM with a rain date on April fifteenth. That'll be kind of the first of our events with Apple Blossom Day and then Bike Rodeo and then maybe some stuff over the summer with a concert in Potluck and then Hard Scrabble Day, but the egg scramble kind of kicks it all off. The library, they're looking to start a home delivery service for those who need it. They're looking for volunteers to drive. Deliveries will be every three weeks and patrons may borrow books, audiobooks, music and most DVDs. They now have programming for children every day at ten-thirty. And their annual reptiles and raptors show, Bill Robinson's Wild World of Animals will be held at the community center at six-thirty this Friday night, the seventeenth. And then in the exciting world of materials management, I was holding it off because it is the exciting world of materials management. For the month of January, we sold three thousand nine hundred fifty dollars in garbage tags and paid out one thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. We had six point one-four tons of single stream recycling and eleven point seven-six tons of garbage. In the sad news, we're now being charged for single stream recycling. That used to be free, it's now twenty dollars a ton. It's still, still considerably less than what we're being charged for garbage, so for sure, please, please, please keep recycling. But unfortunately, we are getting charged for that, so bummer. And a couple of weeks ago, we had our annual electronic recycling event, uh, which was held in the town, I'm sorry, in the town, um, recycling center that was done in conjunction with the town of Red Hook and the Bard Center for Civic Engagement and we don't yet have the numbers for the amounts recycled. But I believe it was probably a lot because it always is, so.
Yeah, we counted twenty pallets and I put a lot of stuff on each pallet. I would guess two or three hundred pounds per pallet, so.
It's usually pretty.
We could, uh, do the math, is that two tons? But anyway, just to repeat something Jen said, on the, the single stream recycling, what we'll do is in the regular meeting, we'll set some schedules for, the regular business section will set some schedules for the budget work. And, uh, but we'll have to calculate what that does. If you look at her spreadsheet, we really average six tons of single stream per month. It looks pretty much standard across every month you pick there. So it's times twenty dollars, times twelve months, it's, it's not huge, but I think we do have to account for it in our budgeting. And, uh, so we'll have to work on that. I'm thinking we should do another push, she does her late spring cleanup.
The spring cleaning, April, May and June.
That helps a little bit for cash flow, but, um, but I think we could look at some more ways to promote our business and do what we can. The other thought, let's see, it looks like we're trending toward forty-one thousand dollars in tag sales. And I think our budget is forty-five thousand in that department, so it's not, not too bad. All right, thank you, Jen. And I guess another lighter note on the egg scramble. I know already the police department are buying and stuffing eggs.
I have a meeting tomorrow about how many eggs we should buy.
We'll ask Beakman, how many eggs do you think we, uh, give out at Red Hook Egg Scramble Day? Five thousand.
If you had answered an obscene amount of eggs, you would have been correct.
Pardon me?
I, I often joke that it's from eleven to eleven oh one.
Yeah, right, it's happens fast, man, don't get in the way. Okay, it looks like Deputy Mayor Kowalczek, we had some of your report, you wanna go through the rest, please?
Yep, uh, let's start with the Village Green Committee monthly report. Current balances of Village Green Committee's related budget accounts. Ours follows community beautification, we have a balance of two thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Shatri contractual balance of six thousand seven hundred dollars in the Village Green Committee checking account. We have a balance of four thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. A Village Green Committee was held on January seventeenth. Dave Pearson, Brenda Cagle, myself completed the two thousand sixteen Tree City USA application and the application was forwarded to the New York State Urban Forestry Council and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on January twenty-seventh. The New York State Urban Forestry Council is holding its annual Tree City Tree Line and Tree Campus USA recognition ceremony on Thursday, March thirtieth at the Albany Hilton Hotel. This is a very nice lunch and presentation of, uh, and recognition of all the Tree City USA and Tree Campus USAs in the state of New York. And I've been going the last couple of years and anybody on the Village Green Committee that wants to attend just contact either Dave Pearson or myself and we'll get you on the list. Attentive date for the two thousand seventeen Arbor Day celebration and the spring planting is set for Saturday, April twenty-ninth. And this is pending tree delivery and we're sharing this date with the Town Tree Commission. They've also scheduled the same date and the luncheon will be a joint event with the Town Tree Commission. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report for the month of January. The village's snow ordinance is currently in effect until March thirty-first. And this means that no parking is permitted on village streets from eleven AM to, eleven PM, excuse me, to six o'clock AM. And on New York State highways, which would be Route one ninety-nine and Route nine, from two AM to six AM during the same period. When snow and ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agency. And the costs associated with the vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And also, I know people have been working hard on their sidewalks and some have led to some frustration with kind of a back and forth with DOT and shoveling and whatever, but the Village of Red Hook does have a law that states that, um, the owner and or occupant of every building or lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk shall remove the snow and ice within twenty-four hours of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Village Highway Department will remove snow and ice left uncleared at a cost of two dollars per linear foot. And this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levy. And it is strongly recommended that residents and businesses who've had recent repairs to their sidewalks, this is within the last nine months, um, due to water repairs or, um, any other repairs on their sidewalk. And this also corresponds with those who live in the southwest quadrant that received sidewalk improvements. It's advised that, that salt and or calcium products not be used for de-icing. If used, these products can cause significant deterioration of the concrete. It is the responsibility of the property owner or representative to avoid this damage and not use these materials.
Hey Brent, if I could interrupt?
Yep.
During the week, on one of your points, I got an email from one of our commercial owners and up on the wall. This is the way a DOT.
That was, that was last night.
Nah, this was like three or four days ago.
Oh, really?
Storm number one, but, um, I, I'll, I deal with that if you're a property owner, even a snow blower.
Where'd you put that?
Even a snow blower would probably choke on that. Jay, could your snow blower eat that?
Um.
This was cleared this morning.
I know that's.
Just the windrow at the end of my driveway, this last snow was bogging it down pretty good and it's a beast.
Yeah, what I mean, I was leading the discussion on, we reach out to DOT each year and they're not the most, they maintain curb to curb, they say, so there they maintain curb to curb, didn't they? And they put everything on our side of the curb instead of their side. There's gotta be some recourse, but I think every municipality that has a state highway through its center deals with the same thing. So we will be going out stealing some of Brent's, but Tuesday night, tomorrow night, and it's not as bad as this right now, but we'll be taking the, the curb area down and clearing that up, so. But I saw these pictures and they go, the other side story is, you know how we built the sidewalk on the south side of West Market Street three, four, five years ago under a grant program? And essentially we did it to kind of de-emphasize the one on the north side, which runs along the old brick wall there. And the people there have even worse problem because the state pushes that kind of snow up against the wall that's taller than me. I don't know how you get rid of that and I was talking with the idea of maybe the board, not tonight, but if we, you know, we did on one of our walkways, make maybe a seasonal walk, something because it borders the school campus. Kids could walk into the middle school and get around other ways instead of going there. Something to think about is if we made the wall stretch somehow seasonal. Because like Brent reads this, there is a code that says technically you've got to shovel that in twenty-four hours or we send our guys in Billy or, you know, it's, it's kind of harsh.
At least there's an alternate route now on the other side, which, which can be used.
One of the reasons we built it and then school built, in one of their projects, sidewalks by their football field so you can get in there. But anyways, it's a different thought, sorry Brent, thank you. I was giving you a little color commentary, keep you going.
I appreciate that, Ed. Just to finish up on the highway, there are no sales of scrap metal during the month of January. The total revenue generated for this fiscal year is two thousand four hundred and ten dollars and sixty-three cents. So we've already achieved and exceeded our estimated revenue. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September two thousand seven, twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, water and materials management departments and any resident or business interested in donating scrap metal can contact the highway department at seven five eight eight six hundred and just leave a message or the village clerk's office and the highway department personnel will pick up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force and infrastructure have already gone through the sewer. Robert touched on phase two, I got a little bit more detail. Not much, it's been pretty quiet, but principal and interest payments for the short-term New York State EFC loan have been paid, I believe.
What do we have there, Brent?
I'm on page two, number two, Red Hook Village Water Project. Okay?
Okay.
We also reviewed the status of the payment application for gross electric, which Robert touched on. On January twentieth, we had a conference call with USDA. Again, response to some emails and some clarification of forms for drawdowns from EFC and payment requests for USDA. Some of the prices, if you're all interested, um, for the next payment application, this is primarily for the prime. Electrical contractor, the original contract price was one, one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars. The current amount due, which we'll be paying on Wednesday, would be ninety-six thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And we have a retainage of fifteen thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents. We also had another conference call with USDA on January twenty-seventh and we discussed the EFC principal interest payments, the USDA inspections of the Red Hook Village well field, primarily looking at the prime electrical contractors' work and discuss lien releases, bond resolutions and other documents necessary for final payment and closeout. On the task force side, I'm a member of that. Meetings were held on January sixth, thirteenth, twentieth and twenty-seventh at the Red Hook Town Hall. We're currently reviewing the status of the Village of Red Hook Sewer Project. We reviewed the proposed Town of Red Hook zoning, zoning ordinance for photovoltaic systems regarding commercial solar farms. We reviewed the proposed Upper Red Hook Hamlet Business District regarding district boundaries, architectural standards and bulk rigs and uses. And we reviewed the Red Hook Town Food Truck Regulations with zoning review committee members Susan Simon and Steve Cole and myself. So we're very busy on the task force these days. And the last report I have, the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaisons representing the village. There was a meeting, two meetings in January, one on January eleventh and the other on the twenty-fifth at the Red Hook Village Building. There were three new members who are being considered by the town board. Aaron Moore, Kevin Maury and Christine Ducharme have agreed to serve as EDC members. We also reviewed the status of the Red Hook Sewer Project, it's quite a topic of conversation on my meetings, anyway. We looked at the outline and contents of the January two thousand seventeen High Notes E Bulletin and discussed providing a statement regarding regulations for Airbnb to the Town, Red Hook Town Board. We also discussed refugee resettlements in Dutchess County and Red Hook. On the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which I'm a member of, there were no meetings held during the month of January, but the current balance of the CPF as of January thirty-first is seven hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-three cents. There's a little typo there. Salt Kill Watershed Community, no, there were no meetings held during the month of January. And also the Red Hook Together, there were no meetings held in January as well. On January thirtieth, the Village to Village Trails Committee met at the Villa, at the Town Hall and representatives from the Village Board of Trustees, the Red Hook Town Council, Bard College, New York State DEC and the US National Park Service attended. And we discussed branding and design of maps, signage and information, location, design and contents of the kiosks, possible traffic calming measures on Route nine G at the Kelly Road intersection, parking facilities at the Tivoli Village Hall, the Red Hook Town Rec Park and the Village of Red Hook parking lot and website and flyers. So the, the V two V or the Village to Village Trail is a trail that's moving forward with a grant that'll connect the Village of Tivoli through Tivoli Bays, through Bard College, through the Town of Red Hook and, um, the Village of Red Hook will be a destination as well, the Village of Tivoli on the other end. So this is being worked and reviewed and implemented as we speak. And that's all I have.
Brent, I had, I had a quick question on the salt and the new sidewalks. And how, how do we assess the, the damage that we're actually doing to them, you know, as we plow the stuff onto them? And, you know, I've been working to clear it off as soon as it comes on.
Me, me too, on my new sidewalk. The village uses a fifty-fifty mix of sand and salt and you could see the salt actually, which is leftover and I just sweep it off as much as possible. But I have seen people, you know, actually throw salt down on some of the new sidewalks and that's the worst thing. It's got a cure for at least a year and that's, we're just trying to avoid it at whatever cost we can and do what's reasonably possible to do to keep it clear of salt, but, um, use sand instead, you know.
Gotcha.
That's about all I can recommend, we can't say don't do it, we could just.
You have to put the stuff on the roads.
You have to clear the roads and you have to make it safe on the sidewalks, that's right.
Yep.
And the DOT uses a hundred percent salt mixture, so it's a little rougher there, so, a recommendation. This actually came from, from the contractor who did some of the concrete work for the water repairs.
Hey Brent.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on your EDC?
Yep.
Your last bullet there. I knew of Dutchess County, didn't know of Red Hook as a refugee.
We don't, we're just discussing it. So I think the, the Dutchess County just got their first family in recently. So this is being discussed by the, by the EDC. I don't know where it's gonna go, if it's gonna go anywhere, but it's being discussed.
All right, let's see. Jen snuck away, but it looks to me like we did the department committee reports. We hit in the regular business, item one, item two, item three, I have, just to keep everybody updated, sample sewer ordinance, like we touched on earlier, we have to create something to insert in our code and McCabe and Mack is putting something together, but the engineers have to look at it, we have to look at it. And it's one of these projects where, uh, in the very, very early stages as far as constructing some wording and when we get that map and plan report, we'll be able to put in some rate information too. But I don't know how involved any one would like to become, but I could forward this to anybody. It's what our lawyer gave us and then last Friday, a bunch of, you know, the engineer and Brent and I were sitting going through it just picking out things that needed to be clarified or added. added or removed and it's gonna be a work in progress for a while.
And this would be in our general municipal law, okay?
Yeah, it's probably three months, you know, it's, it's months away before we're even ready to circulate it to the boards.
And we're also looking at our current water thing and what's missing in there and making sure that we include this in the sewer use law and to make future expansions possible unless painful and and how other people can, you know, how we could add new participants onto the system as it grows.
But.
It's pretty intense.
It exists and like I said, it will get circulated. I think it's pretty, pretty early. I think Olson essentially found a template. And we have to make it more modern and fit what we're trying to build. Anyway. Item number five, lease and then dash police vehicle resolution. This is something, we're replacing the Dodge Charger in the police fleet. And we concur to move ahead in a lease format. It'd be a five-year lease and you all might remember the numbers and it, we all thought be an interesting chance to experiment, trying a lease on the one vehicle. I'm just looking for my notes here on something. Bear with me a moment. What we'd be doing is it comes through Ford Motor Credit Company through, it's called cruisers dot com, Cruisers Incorporated. And it's essentially the state contract supplier for police vehicles. But we get the lease documents. It's a five-year, remember we're buying the five-year full warranty too. So in the prices, it's nine thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars a year. As I was going through it in line with our other meetings and our stated intentions, things were going well. But then they have, they want a copy of a board resolution or meeting minutes. So I thought just to satisfy Ford Motor, we do a resolution and then it would also appear in that more formal format rather than just meeting minutes from our other meetings, workshop meetings. They also want our most recent audited financial statements, a few things like that that, you know, Cindy can take care of, but. So what I did was in your packet, I crafted something called the lease one. Let me find the right one here. Let's see. Lease.
Now, is that a bumper to bumper warranty?
I don't know what that means, but.
That means whatever brakes is fixed as opposed to a powertrain, transmission, you know.
Yeah, it was, it was a full, full warranty.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so anyway, what we had, we could, if you could find one, there's, in your packet, there's one for lease. And then we're gonna head to a different one to do with a police vehicle too. But if you could find the one that says authorizing lease agreement with Ford Motor Company.
This will be number five?
Yes, number five.
We'll have that number, number five.
Yeah, number six.
Mr. Trapp, would you feel inclined to read that one for us, or?
You bet. This is the lease one.
Yes, please.
Police vehicle authorizing lease agreement with Ford Motor Credit Company. Whereas the Village of Red Hook needs to replace a police fleet vehicle and the village board has decided to lease a vehicle for a five-year term with concurrent five-year vehicle warranty from Ford Motor Credit Company. Whereas the village selected is a two thousand sixteen Ford Police Interceptor sedan with options and equipment as listed separately and approved by the Sergeant of Police. Whereas the gross cost is forty-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-nine cents with five annual payments of nine thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-nine cents. Whereas funds to pay for the first year payment will be taken from the existing police capital account and police donation lines, then from similar lines in the future and or general funds as budgeted. Therefore be it resolved that the village of, the village board authorizes the mayor and or treasurer to complete the municipal finance application along with any other lease-related or warranty-related documents and transmit funds to secure possession of the vehicle.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion, like I said, just trying to make it so we can attach it to this application, but it is a process we went through and we're replacing, like I said, the Charger, which for the folks outside, it's quite old, had high mileage and it blew engine components that were warranted to be more costly to repair than the vehicle was worth or no sense keeping it. So we found this option and some other municipalities have been working with lease. We thought we'd try it and go with it. So we had a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
The, just the only thing I just, you know, would just be concerned to be sure that that is what, what typically in the vehicle they call a bumper to bumper, because there's so many computer portions of cars and motherboards and things. I mean, if one should go, it could be a thousand, fifteen hundred, couple of grand, something like that, so.
I didn't bring the actual file, but.
I remember that, not that it sounded too good to be true, but I remember going like, really? That's covered too? Really? That's covered too? So I, I think.
Yeah, it seemed good.
Cause this was from a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah.
So I, I believe that it was.
Okay.
Kind of all covered.
And are we fairly confident that, as confident as we could be that the, the existing police capital account and police donation line would be sustainable over the five-year?
Well, no, that's the head, not, not over the five years. It's available for sure this year and depending what those donation lines and things do in.
That's what I said, or other lines.
Yeah, I read that other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But in the past, they've been fairly consistent?
They have been, but in my model for next budget year, I put in the ninety-four, ninety-seven, whatever we said that number was, ninety, ninety-four, ninety-seven. You know, just to see what it would do to us and when we do budget review, we can look at that depth together, but but this year it's there and then.
Mate.
And it's an annual payment, so. Anyway. Any other thoughts, discussion? All in favor? Mrs. Archuck?
Oh, yes.
Is that it? Jen, I hear yes. I'm all for it. Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Trapp down there?
E, aye.
Aye. Thank you.
E, aye.
And then subsequent to our discussions about leasing a vehicle, on December twenty-fourth, an icy dark night Saturday, Christmas Eve, two thousand and ten Crown Vic was on night patrol, hit black ice and found a state-owned guard rail and a hole in the side of the road that one wouldn't imagine being there, but it was serious enough. The officer did not get injured. The vehicle, being older, was deemed by the insurance company a total loss. The good side to the story is that in the village's insurance policy, we had the foresight to buy what's called replacement cost coverage on police vehicles. It doesn't apply to highway vehicles or anything else. What that means is if one has a forty-two, forty-four thousand dollar vehicle, the insurance company pays forty-two or forty-four thousand dollars. The downside is they've been without fleet, like this morning, today when I came in, police officers have to wait for cars to come back right now and different things. It's not a good scenario.
So that's why the foot controls have increased, right?
That's what we're talking about. And so this, we have an offer from the insurance company that can be a little more specific here. Again, the Crown Vic, that the replacement vehicle by definition is that same vehicle we're leasing. It's the Ford Interceptor sedan. What they can do, we have a five hundred dollar policy deductible. What we're adding is we're gonna get an all-wheel drive one, so they have all-weather condition capability. The policy even covers transfer of viable, modern equipment, like certain programming and, not programming wrong word, like different things to transfer the computers and things they use. That's covered within our policy as an add-on. And then we're gonna keep the car for salvage until we do all the transfers and we can sell it and get the salvage value. So what the insurance company's offering is forty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And then they do, I put it in writing in the resolution, but they do the math and deductions and we net thirty-nine thousand one eighty-five, but we keep the salvage to sell it, so. That'd be in our favor. And we have that five hundred dollar deductible. We can't get around that, so it's about a thousand dollars between those two things. So anyway, my thought is that it's really, the net cost of the village is a few dollars over two thousand dollars. But if we could read this, then we could have some discussion. So Mr. Trapp, we would, in Brent's request, we'll give it a number, so.
Number six.
Would you like to go again, sir?
Oh, absolutely. Police vehicle authorizing purchase with insurance proceeds. Whereas the Village of Red Hook needs to replace the two thousand ten Crown Victoria Police Fleet vehicle damaged in a road accident and the village has replacement cost coverage on police fleet vehicles. Whereas the village selected as an equivalent replacement by NIMR is a two thousand sixteen Ford Police Interceptor sedan with options and equipment as listed separately and approved by the Sergeant of Police. Whereas the gross insurance claim will be forty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Then deductions for all-wheel drive upgrade, policy deductible, five hundred dollars and salvage allowances are applied. Plus additions are made for the equipment transfer. The net recovery is thirty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and nine cents. Whereas funds required from the village to pay the replacement will primarily be from the insurance proceeds, but approximately two thousand and fifty-two dollars will be needed from the budget lines. Therefore be it resolved, payment will be taken from existing police capital account and police donation lines, then from police vehicle repair lines in the general fund as budgeted. Therefore be it resolved that the village of Red, the village board authorizes the mayor and or treasurer to complete the related documents and transmit funds to secure possession of the vehicle.
Jay read the resolution that I developed. Is there a second?
Second.
And for discussion, I see in the second to last paragraph, therefore be resolved. The payment I'm talking about there is the two thousand fifty-two dollar section, so we need some word to qualify that. The, the non-covered or the non-insured, the, the, the non-insured balance, I guess.
Outstanding balance.
Outstanding balance.
Is that outstanding balance to two thousand fifty-two dollars? Is that what that is? Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to, it, in my wording, it's, I think we just need to be a little more precise, be it resolved that the outstanding balance.
I have a question too. So what happens to the car? I mean, do we keep possession of it? We could salvage it, we can.
Jay has some good experience about that. Yeah, we, we scrap it.
And the police would get that revenue?
Yeah, we would get that back as a revenue.
Would that come onto the two thousand fifty-two? So we can load that through, we're not gonna get much from scrap, but.
Yeah. To overanswer your questions, yes, we, we would, what we're doing is, the insurance companies are always under pressure to take them and get rid of them. But we wanted to hold it, so we have time to trans, to get the equipment transferred at our schedule when the next car comes in instead of getting pushed.
Where is the vehicle now?
It's locked undercover and safe, you know.
Okay, but it's not collecting storage somewhere?
Oh, right. Jen talks seasonal insurance, Maven over. I know, showing her this thing. But, but both of you guys are right, really the two oh five two, let's see, how do I do the math here? But to answer Brent's question, it is our vehicle. We would have the right to sell it as salvage when we're ready to sell it.
It's not drivable, right? It would just be cubed or whatever?
I don't know what, I mean, there might be an engine. Yeah, I don't know what's clear inside it, but.
I don't know what the extent of salvage, whether they, you know, like go to take the stuff, like a pick and pull and pull the seats out and, you know, all that sort of junk. I don't know whether that would be the extent or, like you say, they just crush it into a three by three and go. Five hundred bucks and it's all done, you know?
If I could interrupt, you have an expert sitting in the.
Oh, salvage, uh, D O, D, what are you?
That was, that was part of his job.
Yeah, it does not that much.
Yeah. Yeah, it had more than that. What's it mean? Well, that's a good part. Our policy is. Yeah, but we. Nah, it's not bad. It's. We have looked into it in the past. Well, we looked at Town Up Kipsey, some of the bigger agencies, Cyc Lomoff, three years are out.
Yeah, they're closing out, so I don't know what they had.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but, but this, it was an unforeseen development. We knew we were working on lease and this thing spun off and in a way it gives us a chance without hitting, hitting our general budget lines for forty thousand dollars. We're getting a car for two thousand dollars and I think it's worth it. And then it gets that department in a capital replacement position. It's pretty, pretty nice. I don't get four, really. They brought out the, we call it the Popeye mobile. That's not a, that's not really a car. But anyway. Is there, we had a motion, second, we were discussing, we had some questions. But as I see it, what would happen is a checker would come in for thirty-nine thousand. That's beyond, that happens whether, whatever we do. And then they could look at replacing it and go from there. Any other thoughts? So motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, we did lease. Okay, these are a little lighter. It's that time of year where we're setting our budget sequence meetings. Just for all your end game play, playmaking here, the tentative budget has to be submitted to the treasurer by March twentieth, which is plenty of time. I'm suggesting we do Thursday sessions just to keep our workshops and budget things kind of logical. I would think if we did, we have a normal workshop this Thursday, but then if we started after that, I could show you something in a minute here. We have that great model. Let's see if I get Excel open up here. Yeah, I've been plugging in numbers. We, but we all have to sit and the way we do it is we all do it together. I think, I like that and it's, we all feel more ownership. Let me just, just to recap a few things, the let's see. The tax cap is one point one five percent.
One point one five?
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Yeah. And what I was doing is. So you have the general fund, the water fund and material management. Then we have to play around with a new concept where I was building a mock sewer budget. You know, how do we, we, we have some ideas on that and that's gonna be, it's something we'll have to think about. But anyway, is, could folks as a rule do Thursdays, seven o'clock upstairs? Mr. Trapp, have you cleared? How are you in your world?
I'm, I'm working on it. It's, I've got some document going on. Yeah.
I, I think for consistency, we should do that, building availability, different things. So why just by consensus, we'll do that? Is that good?
Yeah, Wednesday's better for me, but that's all right.
Oh, really? What's up and down the board? Is Wednesday better or worse for anybody else?
I, I'm not out until eight.
Wednesday, so it's good for you.
Thursday's probably better, Thursday.
So maybe if Ms. Drew's could make a note, well, set that for Thursday, seven o'clock upstairs. In conjunction with that, public hearing for local law to set the tax cap override, that's the thing we do every year. Doesn't mean we're gonna override it, but we have to set a public hearing because it is a local law. So I thought we'd do a motion to set a public hearing for next, for the March meeting at seven PM. I'll word it more precisely in a moment, but. at seven PM, I'll word it more precisely in a moment, but, um, we'll set it up, put it on the books, and then our goal and our intention would be to stay within the cap, but, um, at least we have that sitting there. It's a requirement, we have to do it that way, so I would make a motion that the, uh, the board set a public hearing to deal with, um, local law for tax cap override to be held at seven PM at our March meeting, which is, is our truck, do you have a March calendar laying there?
Yes, uh, the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, oh, we do a lot of thirteenth meetings, huh? So it's March thirteenth, seven PM, and the clerk's office will have to do the required notice to the paper and everything. I made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other general business from the board we haven't touched on? I had one or two things I could throw in, but anything from you folks?
Just a reminder about the election.
That is what, March twenty-one?
March twenty-one?
Yeah, so, um, it's a Tuesday. It's held here in Village Hall, under the auspices of the village clerk.
So i- is it in fact true we're doing paper ballots this time?
Yeah, I haven't, Cindy announced that, um, I think they're gonna get them printed by the county, but not have the cost of the automated read. So, um, have you heard anything since then, or?
Yeah, um, we're doing paper ballots, we're having a box built, it was expensive to, to rent the machines from Poughkeepsie, so...
And, and they're counted here by the election poll people?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be interesting.
What was the cost from the county?
Numbers we got in the past were like twenty-five hundred dollars. Because it's programming and transport and...
The purple ink for...
He's whispering up here, he said, oh, we're gonna have the purple ink, like, what, was it in Iran or whatever, Iraq?
I think the poll workers can get that for you, Brett.
Anyway, and, um, two things today, with the high winds, we had, um, some of the village was out, but we were reaching out to Central Hudson and the county office of emergency preparedness, and they worked with us, and that, um, for good or bad, I think it took Central Hudson, they refused, it's blowing, I guess tree limbs were touching, and there were no, like, major tree down anywhere they could identify, but they...
The lay was out, wasn't it, on the four-way?
Yeah, so our PD was up there, they got the four-way stop signs up, and, uh, they were helping direct traffic for a couple hours.
The village of Tivoli was out this morning, and I was there, I left at five o'clock, and it was still out, not expected to be on till like six, something like that.
Yeah, it was weird, it was pretty much localized up here, the town had about fifteen hundred customers out, our village had four hundred and ninety, and Tivoli had six hundred, which sounds like all Tivoli to me, so, so it's, um, but it came back here about four-thirty, which is good. We would've had a warming station in our meeting, people would be, uh, but anyway, that was good, but part of the high winds, we got a call from one of the neighbors to the cell tower array that some sort of metal parts fell off the, uh, some antenna array in, into our boxed, enclosed, fenced area, so we dealt with that a little bit this morning, and, uh, we have our consultant looking into it more, but highway went up and looked at it for us, and tried to sort out what was going on, but it was nothing to do with the physical tower, it was more something on it, and we'll have to see which tenant it was and get it fixed, but if you hear anything, that's...
Wind, do you think, wind-related, maybe?
Our consultant wasn't sure, he didn't think wind would do it, but he thought it, it sounded like maybe some parts were off, and then noticed it off, but it's, I, I don't really know, they're looking at it. But the good part is they were down in the enclosed area, and, uh, we didn't have to put any perimeters up or anything like that. We've got, let's see, I think we hit everything. Up to the public, Mr. George, you have, you, you need a microphone if you're gonna speak. Sure.
We, we've got to get the dulcet tones of that voice of yours, like, recorded very well here, so...
Already on?
Yep.
Okay. Just a couple of questions on the, uh, the, uh...
Sewer?
Sewer, yeah. I, I went through the handout, and I see you've got something I hadn't seen before in regard to roof drain connection.
Sitting on?
Roof drain connection, it's probably on there, on your PowerPoint picture. Is that gonna require...
Where, where do you see a roof drain?
Uh, on the graphic from Orenco?
Oh, no, that, that's not happening.
Okay, I just wondering who's gonna be responsible for that.
No.
Good point, George, but no, that's, no, it's...
And I noticed the, is this expansion of this, of the, uh, system, if you go back to one, back when, I think, to where the, I think you went up further over here, you went up past Church Street, and you're going up to Linden.
That's the way it's been?
I don't know, when I was looking at, when I was, I was consulting, where one of my, one of the people came in for zoning and located around here, and on the map I had there, I, there, I discussed it with him, I said, it looks like you're not in it at that, at this point. I'm just wondering...
I believe that's the map that was on the engineering report of two thousand and fifteen?
The day we had the meeting, I was looking at it, and it was not, it was, I think they shopped it right at, at church.
I think, yeah, we, a couple of years ago, we had it stopped at church, and it was, it's been a while, but we did amend it up, yeah.
So...
This is the current one, this is the one we're going with, so this is the one that we...
Are you gonna, uh, uh, is each person getting notified of that they're in it? Okay.
What, what we're trying to do, George, is we're to have small groups of people, similar to what we did last, and just inform them, and then, you know, listen to their comments, and if they had any questions, so we're, our intention is to talk to everybody in the service area at some point.
I just wanted to know if they were actually notified of it, so they don't get surprised by it, because a lot of people don't seem to be totally unaware of it, which, not uncommon.
Right, no, we're, we're, we've had two meetings already, and plans for many more, so...
Alright, um, well, now, the question I brought up last time, I, I asked if the system should not work for whatever reason, who is responsible? I mean, the state builds bridges that don't work, they build dams that break after a year, and they got deep pockets. Is there a bond out there that's an engineering firm, or the contracting firm, or somebody's...
Well, actually, one of the require, one of the requirements for the funding for USDA, and this is similar to the water project, is that we have to put in an annual amount of money, it's called short-lived asset account, so in the event of something that breaks down during the term of the, of the loan...
Well, I'm not talking about breaking, but if this, if the plan does not work, if there's a defect in the engineering, because what you'll have then is everybody in that district will have no source system to speak of, because they'll be filling up pretty quickly in some cases with the liquid, and there's no other option, once you've taken out their old system, this is it. You know, I mean, it's just, it's, you know, everybody says, engineering says it can't happen, it'll, it'll work, I'm just wondering if there's somebody that holds responsibility, and who it would be, because right now, with that bond that you have there, where the village is on the hook for it, if the system does not go into effect, the village is holding on the bag, on the four, four points nine million dollar hole in the ground, because you can't charge the people in that area a fee for something that you don't have.
But there's, if the water project was any indication, there's a series of bonds that, you know, the contractor has to put down, but there's also the oversight with the inspection, so we'll be inspected by, and we're doing this every month with USDA, they bring their, their state engineer down and look at it.
The so-called experts, uh, I get your name of the bridge that didn't work, and the contractor said it's not gonna work, and the engineer, state engineer said, you gotta build it by our plans, absolutely have no option, it has to be our way, and when it didn't work, they went back to them, oh, you know, you didn't build it right, and they, they proved that they told them it wasn't gonna work, and the state, of course, has deep pockets, millions in fact, and not, not many years ago, up in, up in Lake George, there was a ban, uh, dam that the, the state, the county built, and a year later it broke. So it's like, you know, who's, I just wanna see if there's somebody responsible at that point legally, in case it should fail.
What do you mean by fail? Like, it's all built and...
Not work, yeah, and they flipped the switch, and something's, either gravity doesn't, you know, work the way they thought it was gonna work, or the pressure, or... I don't know, I'm not a plumber, I'm not an engineer.
But people are engineers, and people build sewers, plants, and systems, you know, it's not, it's not a mystery.
And there are times when things don't work the way they planned, and that's what I'm looking at.
But we're in, if anything, we're a problem-solution business, we're, it's not like they're building something that never existed before, it's, uh, so...
Wow, those two examples I gave you.
Well, but I, I never heard of those examples, to be honest with you, but in the real world, you know, there are professional liability insurance coverages, and like Brent said, there are performance bonds, you know, if somebody walked away from the project, you know, certain things, the, the performance bonds exist.
Well, if it's built according to the spec, but if something should be not quite right, somebody missed something, or, I can't, I don't know. I'm just wondering if there is something that says, you know, should something catastrophic happen or it doesn't work?
Well, no, I think you have a very pragmatic cynicism, where we have optimistic realism, you know, I think somewhere between the two, it's, uh, well, it'll work, and, uh...
I hope it does, but...
There's so much oversight from, from different entities, you know, that look at this, and unlikely something like you're thinking about could happen, not impossible, so they try to make every assurance that things will go smoothly to the best possible manner, and...
Okay, a quick question to also on the, the plant itself, you're gonna be taking over the entire plant, that existing plant plus doubling the size. So that comes off the tax rolls to, of the other operation, and it becomes part of the municipality?
Right.
Okay.
But it's also, there's also some additional development on that land that will probably compensate for the subtraction of that, so right now it's undeveloped land.
So the property itself, the entire, where it's located, becomes property of the village at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
And most of that is, you know, unbuildable, because it's in the wetland, the DEC, regulated wetland, and there's, again, gonna be expansion phase three there, which'll probably even be better for us as far as revenue goes, as far as tax revenue.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. I think we can forego item A, executive session, it was nothing major, um, I think we've hit the things we need to hit, the vouchers, those key ones at least got signed. I would interest in a motion to pay bills off after audit.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So they can release the checks tomorrow, and then, um, Mr. Brent, are you, uh, thinking we're done?
I am, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.